I'll check with you. I sent you an email about some public records issues, but we can call up with that.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for having me once again. I always like making these discussions interactive. So I've put together some thoughts about things that I think are important for us to discuss, but I really want to dial this in to what's most beneficial to the board and superintendent. So as issues come along.
Sally's on the phone. They told you, right?
No, okay. Ms. Hunt, thanks for having me. On advancing the slides, should I ask somebody to do that?
She will advance it for you.
All right. So if we can go to the next slide, this is just kind of a reminder, what is our why? Why are we doing this? It's very easy to get deep into the issues of the day, and there can be conflicts and so forth, but I always try to get back in center to, you know, the reasons that motivated all of you to want to help your community and help the students do well. I view this as a good to great conversation. Flagler's having a lot of success. Your student scores are good, those kinds of things. So my hope is that we can talk about ways that we can effectively work together, not only the relationship with me as counsel, but between you who are on the board and also with the superintendent. But there is, you know, hopefully you can find the united common goals that you work out in your strategic planning process and thinking about how are we implementing that to get back to the ultimate success of our students, if you could. Okay, so I feel like I've had a chance to have some conversations. I don't know how much y'all know about my personal background. I've been working with school districts. This is my 27th year as an attorney. I always say this is the slide that my mom is really happy about. And, you know, I don't mean this to pat myself on the back, but just so you know that I do focus exclusively on working with public schools. I don't have any private school clients. I don't have any charter school clients. This really is what I enjoy doing. I am proud of the board certification that I got back in 2013. I've worked on the committee that writes the exam for other attorneys who want to become board certified. And I think that's a good indicator that I want to be a lifelong learner. I want to be committed to this work. And I think it has helped me focus in on a lot of the issues that we'll be talking about today. And you have let me come and teach for one semester.
Politics.
For their ed leadership. So everybody who's doing the ed leadership track to become a superintendent or a principal or whatever, I got to teach public school law and told them, we're going to cram three years of law school into one semester. So that was a fun experience. Okay, if we could go to them. We have some other educators in the family. My daughter actually graduated from FSU not too long ago, and she in elementary ed for undergrad, she got her masters in curriculum instruction. And she was always telling me, Dad, you have to have learning objectives. You know, that's what's the object that we're trying to focus on today. So to kind of sentence around that, I understood that the board thought that they would benefit from a discussion about parliamentary procedure. I am not a stickler for parliamentary procedure. I think that that is a tool to help your meetings run effectively. I don't want it to ever get in the way of what y'all are trying to do. And some of my slides emphasize that. There are people that get deep, deep into Robert's rules. And my goal is y'all understand what we're voting on right now? And, you know, do our minutes accurately reflect that? But let's, I don't want procedure to ever get in the way of what you can accomplish and figure out ways to do that.
Just want to share in case you, we have mentioned before multiple times that the board chair, the board attorney serves as a parliamentarian.
Right.
For the meetings.
Okay.
Kind of be the final word.
Sure, understand that. But thank you for that context. Sunshine issues come up from time to time. I think it's always a good reminder, a good opportunity to remind board about how we avoid problems with that. Then want to make sure that everybody's on the same page about what's the day-to-day role of the superintendent versus day-to-day role of board members and discussing some practical scenarios that I see come up from time to time. Okay, so if we can skip ahead to kind of the first thing about Robert's rules. You know, I view it as a framework, and that's what you reference in your policies. Robert's rules were initially designed for a large meeting, like a convention, where you might have 100 delegates out in the audience and some board members up front, and they're trying to wrangle all of that into motions or things that want to get passed. That's obviously a different dynamic than a five-member board. So that's one way. We need to kind of understand that Robert's rules does have some limitations in what the board is trying to accomplish. There's sort of a hierarchy. There's Robert's rules, and then there's board policy, and then ultimately there would be Florida law. And so we always want to make sure that we're giving the proper deference to whichever would take precedence in those scenarios. I think it is definitely a better practice. It looks more professional. If you've got communication, it should run through the board chair. So if a board member were to call on me or somebody were to say, hey, I think the attorney might want to add something, I would kind of want to look to the chair to make sure I've been recognized before I just launch in. And I think that's a better way to go, just so there's one person can kind of be the conductor of business. And we make sure everybody's speaking one at a time, and we give all our board members an opportunity to speak before maybe other folks start chiming in or however we want to do that. The essence of Robert's rules, we just need to make sure we've got one motion at a time and we're dealing with one amendment at a time. We can get tangled up when too many of those things start to pile up. And let's, you know, do we have a motion? Do we have a second for that? Let's have some discussion on it if it's warranted, and then we move on. Sometimes I, excuse me, see issues come up with reconsider versus rescind. Reconsider only applies in the same meeting. And the rule for that, it needs to be somebody who was on the prevailing end of a vote might think, well, wait a second. Now I've got some new information. I want to revisit that issue. I want to reconsider what we voted on earlier in this meeting. But it would prevent someone who was on the losing end of a vote from just constantly trying to bring the same issue, and you would derail the whole meeting, right? If you had to constantly deal with that. So it has to be, the reconsider part has to be somebody who was in the majority in the same meeting earlier that wants to redo a vote.
So like, let's say you're on agenda item C, but, and you voted in favor of agenda item A, but somebody slipped you additional information during the meeting on a piece of paper, whatever. You would, that would be rescind?
That would be reconsider.
Okay, okay.
Rescind is, could be brought up by any board member at a future meeting, but only if nothing substantively has occurred. So maybe a board member votes in favor of a particular contract and then has a conversation with other board members from around the state since we've used that provider and it did not go well, and you might want to rethink about that. Well, you could try to get that on agenda and vote to rescind that contract. However, if the board has signed the contract, if action has started to be taken on that, rescind would not be available. You would then be just operating under the contract, hey, how do we get out of this deal? I think minutes are generally designed, best practice would be to record what is done, not what is said. Your board policy does have some provisions about, board member says, hey, I would really like this to be included in the minutes. And certainly that's how y'all have decided to go. But I think in general, I have seen boards get into conflict with each others when they want to tweak points of emphasis from prior meetings, and then we get into discussion, and now we're having 10 minutes of discussion about minutes from a meeting a month ago. So I think a better practice for, to cut through all of that is to mostly, your minutes should focus on, this is what the proposition was, you know, this is the superintendent's recommendation, this is how the vote went down, and so forth. And again, y'all jump in. If this is not working for you, let's talk about it. But you certainly do have the right under your policies to add some additional and say, I would definitely want this included.
Because all of the meetings for us here are recorded.
Sure.
And boy, you may not be aware of this, but after a meeting, Ms. Thompson spends the better part of the next couple days redoing and typing up all of those minutes. And so we have tried to utilize some of the tech tools that are available to. Yeah, we're definitely doing that, but I think it's something for us to really kind of think about how we utilize our time because it is all recorded. And we do save all of that information. But right now, we are pretty much getting the minutes as much as possible, trying to get it to word for word, which gets complicated. And it may take some, definitely a lot of time and effort on staff.
And, because I have seen minutes that look like Board Docs assists with the generation of those. I don't know if y'all have kind of tried that for your minutes, where basically, you know, it takes the input of the information from the superintendent's recommendation and the vote and just kind of spits it out. And it's a pretty bare bones minutes about what occurred.
That's the safest way to do your minutes. It's what, how, what was the motion? Who voted for what? And if somebody, I've only seen it a handful of times, somebody really wanted something as part of the record, then it would be in there. But word, you know, back in the day, they used to transcribe every word that was said.
Well, that's what's being done now.
But that doesn't need to be done. That's total overkill.
State level, we've never seen.
And we record them all. Like, they're all there and available for us to go back and.
So who's, are they?
Lorraine's doing all that.
Is that how it's always been done?
It's just how it's been done. So she's kind of just inherited what the workflow has been in the past. I will tell you that it has been a point of contention for at least two prior paralegals bringing up that.
It's overkill.
From just a level of efficiency.
Well, I definitely, if it was manually being done, you know, straight from our videos, that would be just way too much. But now, no, I understand that we're using a technology that.
So, no, we have tried, and we're looking at like how accurate it is, but right now, it is manual work.
Because as of right now, in Board Docs, either each one of, as far as I'm aware, each board member can register their vote, yea or nay, or the secretary, i.e. the attorney in the meeting, can register the outcome of the vote.
Well, what I think might be a way to go is that if, you know, probably this stems from before things were, you know, videoed and these are just carried forward, old policies and procedures.
Yeah, no, you're probably, you're probably right.
Yeah, so we've just never been addressed, but maybe it's a time to maybe look at that just from efficiency standpoint. Because we have, we keep an audio, don't we keep an audio and video documentation of this? That could be transcribed at any time if it needed to be transcribed for any litigation purpose or anything like that. So I'm wondering if, for example, in the minutes, if we did log the motions and the outcomes and the vote.
That's it.
And then, but then if a board member wants their comments to be included in the minutes, then they would.
State that.
State that, right? And then that would be done, added.
Can you imagine the hours Lorraine would get back to in life?
I think terrible.
Yeah, that just seems.
And I think with a new structure and how we do counsel, that we're going to need her to operate in a different capacity. I mean, she is a, and I'm not just saying this because she's in the room. She came in the room to kind of learn and hear that she'll be supporting. But, I mean, she's a paralegal. She.
Knows her job.
She can do, she can, she has capacity to do something other things.
Than transcribing and video.
Right, yeah. Well, if there's, then while we're talking about there, if this, if there's consensus for this, why don't we start, why don't we move to that direction?
Well, here's the thing, right? You keep us out of trouble, and we can't take action.
Well, this is procedures.
This is the way of work, I think the superintendent can direct this, as day-to-day operations.
This is not, these type of changes are not going to require a board vote, right?
No, it's their operation.
Right. So we're just giving consensus to the superintendent, saying that this is what we would like to have.
Does not be so detailed.
That's fine.
And I can work with you and Lorraine, you and I could get together. I could show you some examples of some other districts and kind of what that looks like. I really think that they're being generated through Board Docs.
Yes.
And like, it almost writes itself.
Yes, it should be nothing but a pushing of a button for you.
Yeah, that would make so much more sense.
Okay, awesome. Glad that we could help on that.
Look at that.
Okay, so abstentions are not allowed per Florida statute. So it's got to be a yes or no vote on everything. What I have seen come up is sometimes a board member will feel like they're getting called away because they have an issue that they need to, you know, a family issue or maybe some other work issue. I think a better practice would be rather than have board members leave the dais while votes are being taken and then come back if we just call a recess, so they would have the opportunity to address that, or if they needed to recuse themselves from the rest of the meeting. But we shouldn't have somebody leave and leave and then come back and looks like they're, you know, avoiding a vote. So sometimes when there's been a fair amount of debate and any board member has the right to say that they want to call the question to go ahead and let's get to a vote, it requires a two or majority. So in this case, it would be four out of five board members would have to be agree. We've, everybody's had a chance to have their fair input on this. Do we really have a dispute here? Let's go ahead and have the vote. Point of order is how you would raise some sort of objection to procedure. There's no second required. It's not debatable, and you're just going to be ruling for the chair. If other board members think that that rule, that decision from the chair is incorrect, they could appeal to the rest of the board. These are all things that come up exceedingly rare. Hopefully, it's not something that y'all have to deal with on a regular basis. Proclamations. I don't know how the board feels about that. Okay, read them rather than adopt them?
And adopt them.
Okay. That has been a hot topic kind of around the state lately, particularly with the war in Israel and Gaza. And there've been lots of proclamations that school boards are questioning, hey, is this, you know, our core mission that we need to be taking a stand on this one way or the other? There's a lot of wordsmithing going on. And proclamations, I've seen similar boards think about, well, okay, gun violence or gun safety proclamations, making sure that guns are properly secured in the home and things like that. That's something that board members might be comfortable with. But if we get too close to a Second Amendment issue, then you can have division on how that should be worded or handled. Some of your larger districts just get absolutely bogged down in the number of people who want a proclamation for their particular group or this particular, you know, month where Black History Month, that's awesome. You know, there are other months that other groups have designated for themselves and set aside. And so I would just, it's a word of caution to think, is the board going to be comfortable saying yes to some proclamations but no to others?
What is the process to get a proclamation brought forward? Yeah, because I always want to.
I was going to say, I would feel comfortable with the board chair and the superintendent deciding, you know, is this proclamation?
Right. Well, how does it work now?
If I was the superintendent and there was a somewhat controversial proclamation, I probably just wouldn't put it on the agenda at all. But we're never asked as a collective.
You know, I think if, that's probably what happens, that the chair and the superintendent get together and have an agenda meeting.
So right now, the proclamations that we're utilizing are proclamations that come out of the governor's office. Those are the ones that we're utilizing. I cannot think of very many that we have utilized that are just local.
I think Flagler, I think the family center.
Yeah, we have a couple of them that have been historic, historical ones that we've done. However, I do agree that those things have been here within the organization for a long time. But as new organizations, new things come online, we can definitely go through them and make that adjustment. But I think that you, you as a board, just, I'm glad that this point came up for you to make up.
So right now, we're just, we're just basically repeating the same proclamations on a calendar schedule from the previous year. Is that kind of how we're cycling through?
We are getting proclamations from, they come in from the state.
Okay.
And then any of the ones that are local, we have a list of local ones that we have historically done. Like, but they are all connected to larger state.
Like African mentoring association.
Yes, we would do that in collaboration.
Yeah, and yes, we've done that for as long as I know.
Right, okay.
We've really never had a.
But in collaboration.
Why do I feel like we, there was one?
Well, I think it would be wise to just, again, we see them on, we haven't put a lot of attention to them in our, in our meetings.
Staff reviews them all.
Yeah, so when we were doing the proclamations, you know, we kind of just kind of moved past that. But maybe we just got to, maybe we should start revising those maybe a month ahead of time on the proclamations.
And we have them all, and we review them. Staff does review them. But right now, again, that's just been standard order, that the board has read them and not just adopted them.
Who receives them today? If there's a proclamation, who gets it?
It typically comes through the superintendent's office.
So they, you receive it?
So myself or Ariel Johnson.
Okay, and then, so you would have it in enough time so that you and the chair could review prior to putting it on an agenda, correct?
We would have it in enough time to review it prior to the board meeting.
Yeah, so before you actually get it on the agenda. I don't see that as a problem.
Yeah, I mean, do, would, do we have a, are we getting them at least 30 days before these, or these come down like?
Sometimes, yeah, they're not 30 days.
Sometimes it's that day.
Yeah, it is sometimes a short turnaround. So that's why I say we may list it because we know it's coming. But, you know, we meet on the Thursday before the Tuesday of the meeting. That, we don't want to yank something or pull something off. But right now, we, as the staff, we are reviewing it.
Okay, yeah, because I think that the chair needs to have, I mean, the chair signs it along with the superintendent. So I think the chair needs adequate time to review that proclamation, you know, ahead of time. So if they're short notice, I would say we need to have that emailed directly to the chair that they're aware. And then, and if possible, when we do, when we're doing our agenda meetings, you know, that we have those to review.
Sometimes they are available for the agenda meeting, sometimes they are not. But if they are, we'll make sure that they're there and listed. We have not put, we have, if they're there, we have put them up, but it's not something that we're really, we really focus on for your workshop. We really focus on having them for your.
Well, let me clarify that. I meant that our, the chair and superintendent, yeah, not this workshop. Just when we're meeting, that we can collaborate on those there.
And.
And if it's a problem.
The president wants to.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Yeah, and listen, I just want, I've got a comment on the topic, and so you guys just let me know when I can make it. I'm happy to wait.
Go.
Okay, the only thing that I wanted to add to this conversation and how everything has worked out is great. Something that I just would like for my fellow board members to think about, just for the sake of our parents and community, we've got some business meetings where our kind of intro is taking up to like 45 minutes. So by the time we read proclamations, by the time we maybe have different spotlights, like from the Ed Foundation, you know, we can be at like 6:45. And I don't know if, even if it's not been done before, something to think about is, do we just go to a place where we say, you know, the business meeting will start at 6:30? I just think about like a working mom who is waiting to feed the kid because she's rushing over to get, you know, to the GSP by 6:00 p.m., and now it's already 6:45, the meeting is just now really starting, and then several minutes later before public comment. So that really, I mean, that's the only thing that I want to add is, we're just starting to have like multiple proclamations, multiple spotlights, when at the end of the day, it's at least my opinion that that board meeting is in large part there for a working meeting for us, but then also for the community to come out and speak to different things that will be voted on. So anyway, that's all that I wanted to say, that there's anything we can do to better support our community members.
Yeah, well, I mean, the one thing, and I totally get where you're coming from there and your concern for the time of our parents and other community members that want to participate. But the agenda does speak to that, I would say, that if somebody looks at the agenda, it will, it clearly states that all these things are happening. So the public is aware that.
They should know.
We have these things ahead of time, right? So I think that they could, you know, govern their time on their own based on that information. And, you know, yes, we are there for business, but there are some ceremonial parts of this role. And, you know, although we do want to get our business done as efficiently as possible, those recognitions and proclamations really are important to a lot of people in our community. So that's all I'll say to that. But I always want to, you know, take our parents' time and community's time into the equation.
I was going to bring that up in old business, just how can, again, we work around the public comment. But I do think it's important that we are, you know, celebrating things and, like you said, giving the community a voice on those proclamations in the beginning. So I don't know if that's the time to talk about this.
Well, just more, I'm sorry, I just want to say, answer you, is that what we're talking about here is just, this is about what, how our procedures are going to move forward. It's all about this manual here and how we're going to roll, this is what this meeting is all about. So if we're going to, if anybody speak freely on anything in here that you say, hey, this is a way we could work more efficiently as a board, that's what this collaboration is all about, really, so.
Yeah, I just had another parent reach out. They just, they hate to wait till the very, very end of the meeting to say something, so.
And that's the other rule that we have. Our current rule, as it is right now at the night meeting, the only thing that you can speak on as the first public comment are agenda items. And the complaint that we're getting from the population, which is what Christie's referring to, is that means everybody else has to wait till the second public comment before they're said. And that's where we get some constituents that aren't very happy.
Sure.
Colleen, you had something you wanted to add?
I was just going to say, and it wasn't always like that. We used to have public comment in the beginning of the meeting where you could ask whatever. You could do one or the other.
It changed, it changed.
At both times. I was just going to say, I think one of the best parts of our meeting are the spotlights.
Yeah, no, I enjoy that.
So there's, I mean, that's an opportunity, and I actually do look at it as part of the business meeting, right? That's an opportunity to showcase really some of the great things that are going on in the school district to the community. So sometimes when we have a packed room, sometimes I think, we should do this at the end of the meeting and keep everybody here all night long, so they would see what's going on. But, I mean, to address the concern the community has brought forward, you know, do we, when we get to it, do we want to have a conversation about going back, basically, to public comment at the beginning? Or the end of the meeting could be on business or anything that needs to come forward. And I don't know if you have a recommendation, like?
Well, it needs to be tailored to your community. I've definitely got some ideas, and I can share with you models of how other districts have done that.
Yeah.
And I've got a section on that, so.
Okay, there we go.
Well, then we'll talk about that.
Let's wait till then.
On spotlights, that is a balancing act that every district deals with. And I've sat in a lot of board meetings, you know, over the years now. And it is, you know, occasionally easy to get jaded when it's not your choir member from the fourth grade chorus or whatever. But I will say in defense of those, I got called, or I attended a board meeting when I was in high school for a spotlight thing, and I still remember that event. So I do try to remember the impact that we're having on the people that are being recognized. It's a big deal and sticks with them, so. Okay, so old business, talking about efficiency of how we want to get the work of the business meeting done. I would say it was probably a recommended best practice to not invite rehashing of discussion of things that have been decided by the board under the guise of addressing old business. If the board's made a vote on something and decided, and we're moving forward, there's probably not a reason to have old business as a catch-all to say, hey, let's talk about something that we decided three months ago. You're probably not going to get to a better place with that there. And I think it's also a better practice to deal with everything on your agenda if you possibly can, so nothing falls into the old business category that didn't get solved at a prior meeting. You know, sometimes you need to table them. Very rarely you might need to table because we don't have all the information we need for the contractor or whatever. And then that would show up under old business. But I think the majority of districts don't even have that like line-in item in there, in their agenda to address old business. I hope I'm not stepping on anybody's.
No, it's interesting that you describe it that way because, so you're saying if a motion is. No, it's interesting that you describe it that way, because, so you're saying if a motion is, um, either passed, or a motion was tabled, that during that meeting, motion that was tabled might be reminded to follow up under old business?
At a future meeting.
At a future meeting, or an agenda item that was adopted could be brought back up under old business? Cause we typically, for the most part, bring up old business as an item that we haven't workshop yet, we haven't discussed yet, or maybe slipped through the cracks?
What I, what I would.
They're not specific agenda items at specific meetings.
Well, if we just had another category maybe, um, potentially rather than old business, more like board requests, cause here's, here's my thought, is that, you know, we have an agenda that we're, we're trying to work through. We're trying to get through here and give, uh, direction to staff through this meeting, right? And then, um, and, and, and so therefore, if there's something that we wanna bring back, right? It should be say, okay, use that board request time, say, can we bring this back to another meeting, right? To another workshop, and get the consensus for it, and then we could bring it back for meaningful discussion. Cause a lot of times, we have idea kind of conversations in old business, I find, and they're, they don't really, they don't al- always go, lead to anything. But they, they kinda die with whatever was said in that period of time. So if, if really, if we're, if we really want something done, then it should be come back to be an agenda item, um, and, and, and truly have some sort of action that will eventually happen with that, right? Um, so that, that, that's my view on the old business.
Uh, it's interesting, I just, that perspective, and it makes total sense to me now that that's what old business is really supposed to be for. But I'm, I'm wondering, taking what you're saying, right, Will? So let's say you're at the end of the meeting, and you wanna bring back, uh, a, a policy that was adopted for, as an old, because that would be an old business item, the way you described it, right? Like, if we had taken action on a policy, whatever it is.
Months ago.
Months ago, or even a year ago, you would bring that back under old business to revisit, right? So if, if we didn't have that kind of a category, where would we be able to bring that back up under?
Well, if we, if we made a, another, if we just took old business off the agenda.
So just said items for consideration, or?
And maybe at the end, before we have board comment, maybe, we'll, we'll pick a placement, but the board requests, right? So then at that point, all we're doing there is to make sure all board members are, and their wants and needs are being heard and addressed. And then we get the consensus, as we've agreed, that that's how we're gonna bring things back. And if it does, then it will just, it'll be noted, and then it, it will be come back at, at a, a meeting, you know, when that can, can happen.
So you're saying instead of old business items, have board member requests?
Board member requests, right.
And that can be either or, right? It could be an old item, like an old actionable item, or it can be a.
A new business.
Yeah, alternative schools, that we have talked about.
You're taking us both, really?
It could have, it would kinda take both, and then.
Cause we do have old and new business on our agenda, it's a little redundant.
It is.
When, when, from my view of the, the meetings, I, the old business really comes up in workshops. Old business doesn't always come up as, um, a place that a lot of time is spent in the actual agenda meeting.
The only time I do that is when I forget to bring it up in the workshop.
Yeah, so, so right now.
Yeah, we don't do it.
When you think about it, if we, even if, even if another category was utilized, but if we utilize old business for its intention to bring up things that you have taken action on, versus anything that you're, you're asking for us to bring up as, you know, this is something that you're wanting to see, or even new business. Because, you know, I have a list of things on my board that are old, is, is literally labeled old business, but the board hasn't taken any action on it, it's just things that you've discussed in the category of old business, like an EKG policy. That's on, for old business. Um, you wanna update from Patty on the financials, I have that listed under things that you've brought forward in old business, but, you know, maybe the EKG would be old business, because you've already, you've taken action on it. But the, um, financial report is really a request from the board to bring forward, um, an item, so.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, whatever term could be the most generic, that would allow you to do both.
Right, and just put it into one, because board requests may not be an agenda item. It may just be information from staff being, you know, sent out, right? It could be, it could be anything, but maybe, maybe in our workshops and, um, uh, information meetings, we, we, we have it as board request. But then, in our business meeting, we, we still may keep them there, because that's where we can take action on these things. So if, if somebody wants to bring a motion, right, on old business, then that, that is better served at a business meeting than necessarily at, at, at a workshop.
So we're, we're sitting in this room, all of us together, Sally's on the phone, and we're discussing this, right? But say in five years, whoever is on the board, and you have, um, an agenda item that says board request, I worry that that could, could fall back into operations, right? That it would not be clear, right? Cause you, you're new, you could be a new board member and not really understand what rule, you know, requests are, and they could.
The actual name of it, you mean the title of it?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, I wanna wordsmith it, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, we can wordsmith it, that's just kinda like the idea. I'm open to any kind of, uh, rewording of the, of the title of it, uh, that could be.
Sure, other boards have, what do they say?
Board member requests.
Okay, there you go.
And it, it's usually under, then you don't kinda get caught in this dichotomy, is this old business, or is this a new initiative, or whatever? It could be something as simple as, we approved money for this program, Madam Superintendent, could, we get an update on how that's going, you know? Um, at, at a future meeting. And it's a heads up to the superintendent, so if a report needs to be done, she can align the staff time to get that done, and look at future agendas, and like, wow, this next one's a whopper, so we're gonna wait till the first one in March.
Right.
Um, and then we're not here till midnight, um, and all of those kinds of things. You've gotta decide where the boxcars need to get hooked up to the train, so to speak. Um, but that's an opportunity for all of board members. Of course, I mean, you can reach out during the week, you can pick up the phone, you can send an email, but if you want to make, you know, it clear, hey, this is something I really would like to see on a future agenda.
Yeah.
Some kind of report from the superintendent, or maybe brought forth in the form of a recommendation that we actually take action on, whatever it might be. Um, I think it fits pretty well under that board member requests.
Okay, does, does that, the same boards, what did they do with old and new business?
They don't even have old business.
So we can get rid of it?
You could get rid of it?
And just use that?
And, and the only time it would, I'm sorry.
Same thing with new business?
Um, I think new business is everything that's on your agenda for action.
It, board member request could be old or new.
I'm saying that we can get rid of old business, but we won't get rid of new business.
Cause new, new business is your agenda, it's, it's every recommendation on there, is, that's the new business.
Chair Burry, can I, can I just ask maybe a clarifying question?
Sure.
Um, so Superintendent Moore, I think it's great that you're kind of keeping track of the things that come up in discussion that maybe we've been bringing up under new business, you mentioned like the EKG. Um, I'm gonna speak as a board member who's never been chair. Um, really for the last, you know, over a year, it, it's been a little bit challenging for me on like how to navigate things, because it was kind of my understanding that if there was consensus of three or more board members, and we brought something up, um, that it was going to be like on whatever agenda it needed to be on, you know? So like the EKG, I think, I think there was consensus, you know, the expectation that it would be on, if it needs to be on this business meeting for a vote. And so, um, I'm just wondering a couple of things, like Superintendent Moore, if you've got, so for instance, if you already know, um, oh, and I, I hate to bring it up, I'm gonna bring it up, like, Beltar Swim Racquet Club is something that I thought of under old business, because in my opinion, we never saw that all the way through, like, it was my understanding that there were gonna be metrics applied. Um, but what I came to learn is that that was allotted for the February agenda. So I guess I'm, I'm asking two kind of different things. One, is it possible for us to kind of see a calendar, um, looking forward? Like, what do we already know is allotted from month to month? And then two, can we have visibility, if, you know, district leadership is taking notes on our meetings, like, these are the three things that were discussed, and that stays like in this space, that we can refer to it before a workshop, or before, um, a business meeting, so something doesn't fall through the cracks? Cause I, Superintendent Moore, I love that you have like that stuff, but it would be so great for me to go, oh, yeah, now that we're meeting again, like I, like if nobody else makes a motion on this, I wanna make sure I make a motion on it. So I think I'm just looking to see, like, is it possible for like non-chair board members to get a little bit more visibility, um, to these discussion points that we, we talk about?
Uh, yes, the answer is yes. Um, I'll work with, um, Attorney Delaney on ways that, that can go. Cause there is likely a place within board docs, almost like comments or notes or something, where we can add it so that the board can see what information we have sitting out there to bring back to you. However, I ju, I do wanna remind the board that, um, when we're working through the agenda, we are trying to make sure that the agendas are balanced out in a way that would allow for not one meeting to be, you know, seven hours, and one meeting to, to be two hours. And, and I think that when we address this, like, old business, and not just how we're gonna function with old business, but like, um, you know, when we bring up old business, is that the time that we're gonna rehash everything now? Or is old business really direction for the superintendent to say, we wanna bring this topic, we all agree this topic is being brought up, direction to the superintendent, and then we bring it back on the agenda? But oftentimes, our meetings get a little bit out of whack, because we spend time discussing old business for a longer period of time, and then the direction comes. And it's like, it's either we want to bring forward the old business to another agenda, or we don't wanna bring it forward. But oftentimes, it's like, let's discuss it all here now, and it's, I think that's why old business is kinda stacking, stacking up sometimes. There isn't like clear direction. So I have a list of things to bring back, of course, um, but we have to balance that out into the meetings. Um, so we can work through, to answer your question, Ms. Hunt, we can work through how we can go about having that visible to you as a board, but also we would need to make it visible to the public, as we also, that we're not just, if, we're gonna share it with you guys, we're not just continuously getting requests for whatever it is that we're sharing with you.
Yeah, and Sally, if I could add, you know, just for, in general, is that I, I think with, under this area now of board member request, I think if we just think in our own mind, is that this is not necessarily a moment to discuss, uh, why, except for getting consensus, um, but more or less to give direction to the board. So it should be matter of fact and to the point. So for example, I would like to bring back Beltar Swim Racquet Club financials to review at, at an upcoming meeting, right? And then, uh, if, if, for consensus, there could, there should be, there could be discussion, but beyond that, the matter should be discussed at that, when it's on the agenda, for us where we can take, move it forward and take action ultimately at a business meeting. Does that make, does that make sense?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's absolutely my understanding of it also, um, yeah, I mean, I just, I, I think if you take everything that I just said, it's really about seeing things through, and that's really all that I want, is that really important things that we talk about, that they don't just get discussed, but we, they actually go all the way through to being implemented. Um, and so that's, I mean, that's really all, that's like my whole goal.
And I think that's exactly what, where my, my concern was with the way we've been doing old business, is exactly what you just said. It's a discussion that goes nowhere. Um, it, it, I mean, it, it's, it's helpful sometimes to, to, to get your thoughts and share them with the board, and vice versa, but a, a, because it's not an agenda item, it's not leading to a business meeting, the, the conversation goes nowhere, and it doesn't turn into anything. The only way we're gonna move things forward is if we get it on the agenda, that will ultimately, uh, reach the level of the business meeting where we can, where we can vote on it, right? So I think that's kinda like in our, our, our mental state of, of, of how we manage now, if we're gonna call it board member request. We think that, that should be our, our, um, our direction at the end of the day, is it, it is a direction. It's a direction to the, the, the district on what we want from them to bring back to us.
So Chair Burry, I mean, as a, again, as a non-chair board member, like, is the, is the protocol really gonna be that it's, you know, different things are brought up at that time, there's at least somewhat of a discussion to see if there's consensus, and then if there is, it gets put onto some list, and then when you're working on the agenda with Superintendent Moore, like, we know it is gonna be either on the next agenda, or on whatever relevant agenda, like, is that between? Like, I just would love to know, like, specifically how that is gonna work.
What I would say is this, is that you need to be, we all need to be intentional about the direction. So it should be, I would like to see this on our next meeting's agenda, right? Uh, if you float it out as a, just like, I would like to see this come back, that would kinda leave it to the superintendent's decision on when the, you know, when the information is there, where they can collect the data, come back to us with meaningful, uh, information.
And specific in the description of what you want.
Right, so if you want it at the next agenda meeting, or the next workshop, um, then you need to be specific about that, and then get consensus to, for it to come back at that meeting. Otherwise, we're just kinda putting it on a wish list to the superintendent, for lack of a better term. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, totally agree, and I, I, this is such a healthy and beneficial conversation, cause I think there's been a lot of things that have gone out to the wish list land, that, you know, have just never really come back. So I, I love having this process in place.
And the, and the only thing I would, I'd caution us to think about is creating a list, month to month, putting it out to the public, cause I would venture a guess to say that list is very fluid, from day to day.
Not only that, what I would not want to see you guys do is almost have this, um, this expectation from others that we're just, you're gonna have this running list of, of things.
I wouldn't do that.
So what I've heard, and I've heard Ms. Hunt share this multiple times, um, what I'm hearing, and we have the ability to do it, I just need to work through the strategy of how we go about doing it. So we have the example of, I want to see EKG come back at the next meeting. At that time, like, right now, I can tell you what is definitely on.
What's possible, what's not possible.
And we, to say, okay, board, we can definitely do that, however, we have these things also that are currently on there. Because if, if everything is the next meeting, then your next meetings are always gonna be long.
Right, and I think, I think that's part of the consensus conversation, and you'll chime in on that, cause I think that's ultimately gonna influence whether we get consensus, is, is your input on that, right?
Yeah.
But if you're ready to go, and you say, yeah, board, I, I got it, let's, let's bring it back.
I, I kinda look at a lot of those things, like on your list, as parking lot, right? Parking lot stuff, in a meeting came up, we're not gonna address it, we're not gonna fix it right now, so we've gotta put it in the parking lot, and we'll bring it up for a future meeting or workshop.
And some of the, the things that, well, so I use the financial and the Ed Sir example. When you asked for that, Ms. Warmick, at that meeting said, we need to get past, um, the third count, this won't be until February. And so you know that in February, or may, maybe you don't know, because you don't remember back then, but what we wrote down was in February, it's coming back.
Yeah.
Versus the EKG policy that is on there, and I just know that's on there, cause it's at the top of the list, your direction was to work with Advent in order to potentially bring language back. So, again, is that important for us to do? Yes, it's important for us to do, but we have to work with other agencies in order to get to the place to bring that information back to you.
Can we, is it possible to add to just like process? So, I mean, EKG, since we're using it as an example, that is, uh, if you might have seen, there's like one time a year that those are done. So that's a time sensitive, like, is there a checklist the board can go through of how, you know, is this time sensitive? About how many minutes do we expect this discussion to take? Like, I, again, I think EKG is such a great example, because I have a feeling the majority of the board is in favor of, of implementing that. And so, you know, do we not perceive that that's, or do we perceive that that's not gonna be a lengthy conversation? Like, you know, that's, A, you know, is it time sensitive? What is the deadline for that? How much lead time do we need to put that together, like you said, working with Advent? I mean, it's, a lot of this to me is like project management, you know, one-on-one, so, um.
And so, Ms. Hunt, on the, I think you're right, I think it is project management, and your project manager is your superintendent.
Right, that's what I was just gonna say.
So, that's more operations, and I think it's totally appropriate for board members to have, like, good communication with the superintendent, and do some check-ins on particular items that are kind of on your list, or things that you might need an update on. But I think. But I think every board member's needs in that regard would be different. So that might be, rather than creating a new process, um, that might be just something that could be handled between board member and superintendent on an as needed basis.
I would say, if you haven't already, schedule a, a monthly meeting, whether it be in person or by, via Zoom or telephone, and, 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 and get these updates directly from Superintendent Moore. Um, because you know, that, that is, you know, th- th- this meeting here is about being in the sunshine and we, we're, we have to be here together. But when you're, you're one-on-ones with the, with the superintendent can happen anytime. You know, whenever it, it's itching in the back of your brain, you can just pick up the phone and call her and get an update, right? Or schedule a meeting. So that, that would be my suggestion on how to address tho- those upcoming agenda items, requests.
That's the best practice.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Consensus. A lot of this is pending consensus.
Right.
What happens when consensus ties?
Can, I, actually, you're anticipating if I can, I had two, two points that I wanted to make. I actually wrote that down as notes. Um, so I just wanted to tag on to the chair's comments. It's a mindset shift from old business generalized discussion to a specific request that is focused and intentional. I think that's where we're trying to get, and I think that'll help your superintendent too. Um, there has been discussion about consensus, and that was my second point. Um, I would want to emphasize that it's legitimate and appropriate for one board member to make a request um, of the superintendent, hey, I would like some information on this, or I would like to see a workshop so the whole public can know about this one thing. Now, that's still going to be somewhat, there's kind of a check and balance there between the superintendent's deciding how much time, staff time should be devoted to this, are we in the middle of third calc, all those kind of things, and the chair looking at it together and drawing up an agenda for a future meeting. Um, you don't want to have a situation where one board member really feels strongly about a particular issue. I want to see solar panels on every single roof in, in the district. And, you know, maybe that's not practical, but one board member is just convinced that that's what we need to do. When I have run across situations like that in the past, I've advised the superintendent or the chair, go ahead and put it on the agenda and let the vote turn out however it's going to turn out, and then you move on to the next thing. Um, so I don't want to see any board member feel like they don't have access to the information they need from the superintendent, whether there's consensus for a particular request or not. I think board members need to have a reasonable opportunity to be informed about what's going on. And, and opportunity. I, I think consensus.
What you're recommending then is we would not need consensus.
I, I'm saying two things. The first thing I'm saying, it's consensus is helpful for the superintendent to kind of understand the urgency of bringing this back or the scope of maybe the project. If there's not consensus on something, I'm saying consensus is not absolutely required for something to show up on a future agenda, whether it's informational or even if the specific request is, I want to see a vote on this particular thing. If there's not support for it on the board, the better practice that you're going to hear
Call it to a vote.
Is go ahead and let that person, you know, make the case for it and see how the vote turns out.
But if we're at a business meeting and, and a board member wanted to bring a motion, although it's not an agenda item, it's my understanding as long as they would get a super majority, then that, that could carry even if it was not on the agenda, is that correct?
Potentially it could. My concern in those scenarios is, has the public had a reasonable opportunity to?
Not the best practice, for sure.
Right. It's, we don't want to be winging it and, and throwing stuff on the agenda that hasn't been on there. I've got a slide on that in the future. Most of the sunshine law cases are about proper notice for the meeting, not specifically every single item on the agenda for that meeting being listed ahead of time. So if you tell the public the meeting is happening, you have really met your sunshine obligation under the strictest reading of the statute. However, we all know we want the public to have the opportunity to know what are we got talking about at that meeting. So we want the agenda to also be available reasonably ahead of, of the meeting so they know what's going to happen at the meeting that has been properly noticed.
Well, I guess part of the consensus, the, the concept behind the consensus was, you know, if, if we can't get a consensus here at a workshop and, and, and there's, and there's not interest, do we want to spend district and board time on it by bringing it back as an agenda item, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, I think you create, I think you could, you could create some animosity on your board, right? Because, and, and if you bring, and you may not have all the information at the table. So if you bring up an item, staff doesn't have all the information at the table for that board member's concern at that point in time. So it's, you want that brought up, and kind of what Mr. Delaney is saying, it's put to a vote. You know, at that time, when you have all the information and everything is done, you as an individual elected school board member had an opportunity to bring forward a concern to be addressed. So, I mean, I can see how it can cut both ways, but I also can see how it can create a little bad blood possibly too.
Just, so if I could, I think it is not a better practice if a board member is very passionate about a particular issue that clearly doesn't have the support of the other board members. I, I don't think it's a good idea to just leave that off the agenda forever. That, that's going to fester. Um, however, I don't want to see consensus sort of substitute for, um, a workshop discussion and, and it's like, well, three board members were kind of nodding their head, so I think that we've got, we're not voting in workshops. You know, that's not on the agenda, it's just for discussions. So I don't want to elevate consensus to sort of substitute for an official vote in a meeting. Um, so I think the better practice is, if a board member makes a request, that opens up an opportunity for the superintendent and whoever the board member is to discuss that request and say, you know, hey, what you're asking for, the scope of it is huge and was going to gobble up a ton of staff time. Can we reduce the scope and I, can I get you the report of the information you're asking for in a different way? Or can I have more time to get it done? Or is this something you feel so strongly about, you really want to see it on a future agenda and vote for it? I'm not sure there's the support for this. The superintendent's not going to be a conduit for information to, to hold the other board members. I'm not suggesting that. But, you know, it, the board member request opens up the opportunity for those a little more focused discussions, maybe one-on-ones off the dais.
So, may I ask a question? Um, and not that we have, we, we have that here, but thinking about the future, especially because we, we wanted to make sure this information wasn't in the board manual, um, how do you handle if one board member has an exhaust, this exhaustive list of things they want to see? And so now, you know, Dr. Conklin, I'm going to pick on you for a moment.
Go, go pick on her.
You know, and Dr. Conklin, and her board request time each time, she has five items that she wants. And so now we're working on those five items that the board as a whole may or may not, um, in a workshop. And I'm, and, and I think it is retraining, I thought, because we're looking at some, some of the things that we do. That would come up naturally in a workshop. It wouldn't always here come up in a, um, an agenda meeting, an actual board meeting.
Here's how I've seen that be handled in the past. If you have, uh, one board member who is very high needs and is wanting a lot of information that's taking up a lot of staff time, um, then I think you can draft policies, there are sample policies around the state that boards have already adopted that say, hey, if the superintendent looks at a list of requests and realizes it's going to take an unreasonable amount of staff time, be very difficult, um, then the superintendent can bring that back. And then you can get an official, not consensus, but an official direction from the rest of the board. This is, this is not something we want to spend this much ta- staff time on. We want our superintendent focusing more on the items in the strategic plan that we all previously agreed to were the priorities. And so that would give the superintendent a fair out for not ignoring the board member's request, but saying, hey, I am going to follow the actual direction of the board on this.
And I would hope almost to a degree, LaShaka, if that was happening, that the, the board members would rein in the other board member to just say, uh, you know, that's not, that's not a fair and realistic request. How about we get it to one or two? You know what I mean?
And, and you can make that request, and if that wasn't working, then you could also adopt a policy that would address it.
Can you, um, like that policy you're talking about, could you get us a, a sample of that?
Sure.
Because I'm trying to keep notes as we go in the policy procedures that we have. So, because as, right now, we would add something to one C1, um, in regards to consensus of agenda items. So I'm just trying to make sure we don't lose anything as we go through the conversation.
Okay.
So, that should be.
Well, I'm still on my consensus question.
Yes, ma'am.
So we have a two-two on consensus, what happens?
Well, it's going to depend on the circumstance, and what I am suggesting is that.
Well, not necessarily, I'm just saying.
Okay, so if.
And we have a two-two.
If there's a two.
It seems to be four a lot of times.
Okay. So if there's a two-two vote on something, the motion does not pass?
Right, that's how motions work.
Right.
But this is in a vote.
No, but it's a consensus item. That's why I want to get clarified so we can know how to move forward with that.
So, and, and again, I would say a consensus, um, I think that there should be less focus on whether there's consensus for a particular board member request. I think the board member should make the request. Um, other board members may chime in, say, I think that's a great idea. I would really like to see that. It's time sensitive, superintendent, could you please bring that back as soon as possible? There, there's nothing preventing you from doing that, but whether there's consensus or not consensus, I think the superintendent should take the request, see if she can reasonably act on it without, you know, taking up an enormous amount of staff time.
You know, so essentially, having lack of consensus, this will not preclude the item from coming back. But maybe it should be a measure of priority to the board as a whole when bringing it back, unless, and, 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 and unless that specific board member really, you know, when we have not got consensus on something, they just kind of fall flat. If it's something that's really passionate to that board member, they're going to make their position held known and saying, hey, I, we really, 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 I really, really want this. So we give value to that, right? And then maybe that brings the, the, the measure up a, a rung, right? So I, I, I think that maybe that, that's how we should be looking at consensus. It, it ultimately is not, not necessarily a, that, that's just land in the sand, you don't get three, you don't get it on the agenda. That, that will be the, not our approach.
I, I wouldn't say that there even needs to be a consensus check-in every time a board member makes a request. I would just make the request and maybe that opens up that conversation between the board member and the superintendent to, to flush that out if they need to, if the superintendent's got follow-up for it. I don't think we need to go down the line and do a check-in whether we have consensus for this or not. But if other board members like, yes, that was on my list, I was going to make that request, Madam Superintendent as well.
Yeah.
You know, it's okay to say.
You're the superintendent, you probably make, pay real close attention to if there's more, right? Wanting to see it, that might push it up on the priority list.
So ultimately then, if, if, just going back, just to kind of get, wrap this up here on the, the, the board member request now. So basically, we're going to make our request be as specific as possible, and then if we don't, instead of getting consensus, it just, it's, it's just a request that goes to the superintendent. We're not going to discuss it or debate whether it has value or not. Just let it carry forward to the list and then we'll address it at agenda making time.
That is my recommendation.
I like that.
I can, I can live with that.
Still with us?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Next slide. Okay, so just to kind of wrap up this section, um, I, it is my belief, I don't want anyone to feel like form has been elevated over substance. If you want to make a motion, just say, I want to see X, Y, and Z happen. And, uh, if, if you need any assistance from me, I will help, you know, articulate that. But, uh, I don't think that there's a lot of really important magic words when it comes to Robert's rules. I, I want each board member to be able to get their intentions across. Um, and we just want to make sure that the minutes accurately reflect what happened in the meeting. Um, and so, uh, my whole philosophy about parliamentary procedure is we're trying to determine what the will of the majority wanted to, to have happen, fair opportunity for the minority to be heard, and then let's carry it out. So. Um, any follow-up discussion on any of that? Are we okay?
I think that's a good, pretty good.
Okay. And then if we go to the next one after this, um, just what we were touching on a minute ago, the sunshine cases, you know, i- if we went and pulled from the government and the sunshine manual, um, the cases that talk about what you have to do in terms of seven days before a meeting or it's three days notice, okay, or whatever, it's really focused on the notice of the meeting. Hey, a meeting is going to occur at this time. It's not as focused on what are the agenda items for that meeting, okay? I don't want us to get overly focused on that issue because for public input purposes, we still want our agenda to be available as close as possible to when we're putting the notice out. Because we want, we don't want to just invite the public in to watch us do stuff. They want to show up for their particular issues that they care about. Um, but it's just an important reminder, sometimes people, I have gotten the question, well, can we add this to the agenda? Um, we actually noticed this meeting three days ago and the, the meeting's now three or four days out. Um, you know, can we add something to the agenda? And the reason that you can do that is because the meeting's been properly noticed. We can update the agenda for good cause even up to the start of the meeting.
Right.
If, if we need to.
So it's not all the agenda items. I think that's been a great confusion in our community. It's just a stating of the date, that's it, seven days prior.
And a reasonable amount of time for them to see the agenda.
Yes.
And I think now that, I mean, they're debating, I don't know where it is right now, but they're debating doing away with the actual publishing, the, the dates in the press, in the hand, the paper. You can do it digitally.
That has been kind of before the legislature the last couple of years, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, however, there are, there is a statutory right in Florida for members of the public to have an opportunity to be heard on an issue um, or to address the board before the vote is taken. So in order to capture that, that's not strictly a sunshine issue, that's more of a, a public comment issue. Uh, but in order to capture that input, we want to make sure that the public has the agenda in hand so they know when to show up. Okay. Um, and we're not looking to skirt the sunshine law, we're trying to make it work for everybody and be able to address their issues as we need to. Everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Um, so we never want to have sunshine law violations. We definitely want to, um, adhere as closely as we possibly can and not even get close to the line. So I'm always available if anybody has questions about that. Issues that I have seen come up, we just talked about last-minute agenda changes and good cause. Uh, the chair just needs to announce, hey, for good cause, we are adding this item to the agenda, and this is why we're doing it. You know, we, we didn't get the information back from the state in time, um, and that's why we got to get this grant.
I think that's going to clear up a lot of things, because I think, I think that's going to be helpful.
Okay. You know, I, I've seen it happen just in the last two months, like, yes, I know we're just adding this grant, but the, it was only released from the state yesterday, and we don't want to miss out on this money, and that's why it needs to be on the agenda.
Yes.
So, things like that come up. Um, we want to be very cautious about hot microphones. Uh, that's not directed at anybody in this room, but I mean, that's a national issue. I mean, we have probably think of circumstances that we've seen, and nobody wants to be at the next YouTube sensation. Um, want to be very cautious about pre-gavel and post-gavel discussions. It's very natural human, you know, uh, inclination to sit down and say, wow, you know, um, look at the agenda and we're talking about this thing, then I think it's great that we're going to finally vote on this tonight. You know, I, I don't want that to even be technically a sunshine violation because that actual gavel hasn't come down.
Hey, Attorney Delaney, can I ask a question about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, when I first started on the board, um, Attorney Gavin was facilitating like a post-business meeting debrief, um, back behind the, you know, the dais. Is that something that is, um, like legal under sunshine, or is that something that the board would not want to, to do again?
Um, you know, I don't know all the, the details of that. It's some, not anything that I would recommend that we do. I think if we're discussing public business, let's do it in between the start of the meeting and the end of the meeting. Um, and when the meeting's over, we can talk about Gator football or the weather or whatever anybody wants to talk about. That's not likely to come up for a future meeting.
Let me clarify that a little bit. The purpose of those meetings was to discuss how we as a board handle the meeting, not.
She was doing, facilitating a workshop.
Yeah, not, yeah, not specifics. So it would be like, well, you know, we shouldn't let that person speak or that person, or, you know, that kind of thing.
So what I would say.
Like the debriefs?
Yeah, debriefs, yeah.
So what I would say is, um, the, the gold standard test is. So, what I would say is, the gold standard test is, it's a, it could potentially be a sunshine violation for anything that's likely to come up for a future vote for the board. And I think that test can be hard to apply on the fly when you're talking about public comment. And then somebody might think, "Well, you know, maybe we should change our public comment policy." Well, now we're getting really close to the line. So, I would rather steer clear of those, and if we need to have discussions, I would rather in the workshop format or during the actual business meeting.
Yeah, and the reasons we started the debrief process, that was started years and years ago, and it was really to work on mending some relationships. It was- it would happen immediately following the board meeting. Christie would facilitate the discussion, and it was strictly on the flow of business, right? You know, God calling you, interrupted every five seconds, everybody, that, you know, it was really unfair. Or it might be, you know, the way you handled the public really was not okay with me. Or, you know, you were really nasty when you turned around and gave me that piece of information. It was more to- it had nothing to do really with-
The meeting.
Board business, but it had more to do with the working elements. I don't, you know?
That makes sense. My old trial attorney instincts went, because I don't know exactly what people are gonna say, and so rather than-
No, you're 100% right, because there was a few different times over the years of that happening where I'd be like, "Okay, we need- everybody needs to go. We can't, you know, we're tiptoeing."
Right.
We're getting close.
And we haven't been doing them, so.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
It's fine with me.
But we gotta get this out of- that out of our-
I think that's probably something I would recommend steering clear of.
Yeah.
And just to tell you a little horror story, so you know, this did not actually involve a board member. It was a city commissioner member, and the city commission was having conflict with their mayor. And the mayor's assistant was responsible for preparing the meeting materials. And the commissioners felt like the mayor's assistant was holding the information back, and they couldn't get the backup items on the agenda timely to review ahead of time. So, they made the habit of showing up to the meetings, trying to do their due diligence like 30, 45 minutes early, so they could go through the hard copy of the backup materials for the agenda. And so, two city commission members were there, sitting there, trying to do a good job and go through, and, "Ah, this contract, and, you know, I see that's on the agenda for tonight," and there was some offhand commentary about it. Unbeknownst to them, the city, the mayor's assistant had also started all the recording equipment. So, all of this is captured on audio and ended up in the state attorney's office with an accusation of a sunshine violation. And the co- I was, my firm was retained to represent the city commission members, and in my conversations with the state attorney, he's like, "Everybody goes through annual training on every elected official in Florida. Goes through the annual sunshine training." He goes, "I don't really care what their intent was. I don't care that they're trying to be good commission members. I don't care that the mayor's assistant sort of trapped them, and I don't care that they get along with the mayor."
Don't want to be in the paper for it.
The state attorney's attitude was, "I don't care about any of that. I have a tape of elected officials who get annual training on the sunshine discussing an item outside of the sunshine. I have to take action on that." And so, he prosecuted that case. And so, I just tell you that little story to remind you that there are serious stakes involved. You know, there are, there are commi- city, excuse me, Orange County commissioners. I don't know if you remember this sort of text gate story from Orange County a few years ago, where during a public meeting, county commissioners were texting each other and a member of the public about an issue that was being discussed at that meeting. And they all got prosecuted for that. So, I don't want that to ever happen to any board that I work with, and just remind you that the stakes are there. So, we do have audio recording equipment. You know, I really try to emphasize to our team in that regard, "Let's not create unnecessary hot microphone moments. Let's not have the backup camera recording something in case the primary camera goes down for 15, 20, 30 minutes before the meeting starts." You know, these are all little areas, because that backup camera is still a public record, in my opinion. So, I just want to really emphasize, let's be super cautious. Let's wait till the start of the meeting to talk about business regardless of how good your intent is, okay? All right. So, that's kind of addressing IT issues that can come up. Okay, so the sunshine manual does actually address, there are cases out there about inadmissible comments, sort of side comments between board members that maybe aren't picked up by the microphone. That's a no-no. You're not really supposed to do that. I think it's a better practice. I try to just stay off, not even touch my phone during a meeting, so there's not some perception maybe that you're not paying attention to what the public speaker is offering or whatever. If somebody says, "Hey, on the calendar, we need to look at this meeting," then I, you know, I feel comfortable like scrolling through, "What's my schedule look like?" But other than that, I really try to leave my phone alone, and certainly I have laptop on there. It's expected, I think, that we're, as our way of work, we're gonna have laptops open and doing things like that. I think it would be okay certainly to send a message to the superintendent, "Hey, I want to follow up with you on this particular item." You know, send them an email. And I'm always going to say, so laptop use in a meeting is better than phone use. Just kind of, there's a better public perception to that. And certainly, I would always emphasize that if you need something from the superintendent, please put it in an email rather than a text, because we don't want to generate additional public records that aren't archived in our email system, and we're properly keeping track of all that stuff, okay? All right. Okay, so reasonable notice, we've touched on this. The specific timeframe, the Florida Administrative Code does mention seven days. Attorney General's told us that's, you're in good shape if you get it out at least seven days. There are particular cases that have said as little as 24 hours, two, you know, one to three days can be under special circumstances, but there's an Alachua County case that says you cannot notice a meeting 90 minutes before, and that's not ever, you know, that's gonna be unreasonable. So, okay, so the next slide.
Now, what about, so, what about an emergency meeting?
Emergency meetings does kind of fall in that 24 to 72 hours. That's been found to be sufficient. The risk that you run, if for some reason we needed to get together on less than 24 hours notice-
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I mean, one hurricane, we all had to come together for something to approve something, so it could happen.
So, what I would say is, you know, the more public notice you provide, it starts to get into a very fact-driven analysis. You know, how did you get the word out about this meeting? So, the more public notice you can provide, the better. The risk that you face is whatever action taken during the meeting can be found to be illegitimate, and you might have to go back and redo it.
Right.
So, if you sign a bunch of contracts, or we're getting, you know, these people to help us with our FEMA appeal, or whatever it might be, we don't want to be six months down the road and have a judge declare that contract's not even valid.
Right.
So, that's the balancing act.
Got it.
And I think the superintendent also has a lot of authority to protect.
So ultimately, you have to defend your decision, why you did that. You were, to the point, you were not trying to exclude the public. It was just done because it was a time-sensitive matter, and you'd have to be able to prove that.
Right.
In that event, yeah, okay.
And what I would hope that there would be some other opportunity, maybe we could go back and revisit at a future meeting and do whatever we can so we don't have a judge saying, "No, that whatever you did at that original meeting is invalid." So, okay. So, I don't know if this is something that has been brought up questions. Sometimes we're talking about other types of meetings. There are districts who have wanted to do a tour of district facilities. How is our bus bar look? How are our bus maintenance facility look? And there's actual cases that have come from that. If there's a meeting of this board, it needs to take place in Flagler County. You cannot say, "Oh, but we're all over in Tampa for FADS. Can we just get together?" And even if we notice it ahead of time for convenience sake, can we do that? Or we're all gonna be up in Tallahassee. Can we have a board meeting up there? You cannot. It has to be in the county where y'all are originated. If you're meeting somewhere other than your board meeting room, you need to think about, "What are the logistics for public access? Are we gonna be able to have proper minutes taken?" You know, those kinds of things.
Mr. Delaney, can I just ask just for confirmation? Because I think, especially coming new onto the board, you, the sunshine laws, you almost feel paralyzed by them. And being a school board member can be really super, you know, isolating, because these are the only people you really get to work with, but technically, you're not allowed to talk to them. But you can talk to them. If you're at a conference, you can go to dinner with them. You can socialize together. You can have a conference. You can be stuck in the elevator together. Nobody's gonna get in trouble. You just can't talk about school board business.
Yes.
Right?
You could ride two events together.
Right.
You could, you know, do all of those things, or totally, I've got it right on here. Do we need to notice social events? No.
Correct, okay.
But you just gotta know what the rules of the road are. Don't talk about something that's likely to come up for a vote at a future meeting.
Yeah.
Or school board business is another way to put that. So, absolutely, board members can and should speak to each other outside of meetings. You're involved in your communities. You're gonna show up at some of the same community events. What the challenge that I see come up is when two board members are at a community event that they're passionate about. Maybe it's the foundation, or maybe it's something else. But both of you are there, and now members of the public or members of whatever that organization want you to speak about something. You know, that's when you're better off saying, "Hey, we didn't notice this meeting." And then I've even seen people say, "Well, we noticed it for our city commission," or whatever. So, it's fine. You can go ahead and talk. I still wouldn't do that, because we still have a responsibility for our minutes to be taken, right? And was it noticed for our constituents? That there would be board members there talking about it.
Let me ask you, sometimes past practice, not so much with this board, but in past practice, when we had board members show up, two or three at the same event, the general rule of thumb, and it was unspoken, was whoever first started speaking, it's, the rest of us had to sit there basically and keep our mouth shut.
That is a better practice.
Okay, okay.
If you're handling it that way, and everybody's comfortable sticking with it like that, that won't be a sunshine violation.
Yeah, so it's kind of whoever speaks first at that meeting can engage and engage in the conversation, but after that, we've all just kind of basically-
I do, I, there are a couple ways that I would have some concerns about that, because if the person said, "You've got three board members at a meeting that hasn't been noticed. It's at some community group or whatever, and one of the board member who speaks first says, 'I'm strongly in favor of these three things. I intend to vote for them as soon as they come up on the next agenda.'" Have they then communicated their intent to other board members outside of a meeting? Not that different if they had sent an email to them. That, I think it would be better to even avoid that. The safest thing to do is say, "I'm really not gonna discuss future board business here. I'm gonna talk about education policy coming out of Tallahassee. I'm gonna talk about, you know, whether we have the right balance between state and federal involvement, whether we've got adequate funding for ESE." You know, there's lots of things you can talk about, but specific things that are likely to be a future board vote, that's your red line that you want to avoid.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And that's why you can be at FADS, or FSBA, or other professional meetings and talk generally about those things, but not, "Are we, what are, what's the renovation at the gym gonna look like?" And so forth. Okay. Anybody have any questions about any of this? We're pretty okay. Public comment. I was really impressed when I was at your evening meeting in January, and y'all have up there from your policy kind of the rules of the road for public comment and how that's gonna work. I think that's a good reminder for folks. We certainly have seen a lot more participation, yay, but also screw me, which can be uncomfortable, of the increased level of public engagement at school board meetings, and that's not particular to Flagler. The thing that we always want to emphasize is that the board has to remain viewpoint-neutral in its receipt of public comment. It is not okay for us to say, "Hey, this person is calling out specific employees and praising them by name, and that's great, and you can do that all day, and I'm gonna give you an extra three minutes to do that." But as soon as somebody gets up who's critical and says something, "Hey, I think this particular school district employee is doing a bad job," I don't think that's, we can really shut off the mic at that point. You know, we gotta take the good with the bad.
Yeah.
And so, we want to just maintain viewpoint neutrality as much as we possibly can. So, Florida statutes-
Mr. Delaney-
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Delaney, can we just put a little bit more onto that conversation? Is it a matter of like policy where, like, the microphone will just be shut off? Where, we have now in both workshops and board meetings where we have members of the community who are really not respecting the three-minute duration that they're allotted, and it would just be nice to have just kind of a firm protocol of, I mean, we've got people who, they're just gonna stand there and keep going, and it actually causes, I'll speak for me personally, it causes me some anxiety when someone doesn't kind of follow the rules. So, have, do you have experience with other boards of like, anything we can do aside from literally having like security come over? Like, what would be a best practice when someone is refusing to stop?
You know, that is a balancing act, and it's tough to wheel the gavel whoever's the chair for that meeting. That they need to make that judgment call. They need to maintain that viewpoint neutrality. I think a better, a best practice is at three minutes, say, "Thank you for your comments. You know, out of respect for other speakers who still want to speak at this meeting, your time is up." Then it might be a judgment call, whether you might let them finish a sentence, you know, or a single point, and if they don't, if they're not respecting that, then it's probably time to go ahead and cut them off and say, "We're, thank you for your time. We're gonna have to ask the next speaker, and please respect, you know, their time as well."
Yeah, and I think it just, I think it really should remain kind of a judgment call, just because we don't want, just as somebody goes over a minute, call the sheriff to throw them out. And although I do believe everybody needs their time, and they need to respect the time of the person behind them, at the same token, the, you know, it hasn't really gone on for, I mean, I think at the most, I've seen it happen, maybe about 30 seconds-ish beyond there, that, before I, in my case, I've just told them, you know, "You need to end that." So, just from my position as the chair, I'm not gonna let somebody go on for another three minutes from, at that moment, because they have another opportunity to speak at the end, and we've had members actually do that. They've come back at the end and continued their thought.
I think it has to be the judgment of the chair.
Yeah, because it-
And trying to de-escalate a situation too, because you can escalate a situation for some reason.
Some people are not gonna stop depending on what situation it is.
Right.
No matter how many nice times you try to tell them.
That's right.
They're still not gonna stop, where it does become necessary to have our SROs.
Yeah.
And it might just started with a, start with a muted mic and then go from there.
Yeah, and it's still a little stop.
If it gets ugly, but I mean, in the 24 years, I think I've only seen, you know-
A couple. There's a few people, and there's still a year.
Two people taken out.
So, you've got one more card to play as well, which is you can recess the meeting and take the audience away.
Yes, that's, we've done that before too.
We have only, yeah, I know, once, but that was-
We did that when-
Yeah, during the-
But Sally, I just want you to know, I am mindful of that, so I want you to know, I share the same concerns as well, so it's definitely something I take seriously, so just want you to know.
No, I appreciate it, and but I also, I also cheer for, you know, I think about the community members, you know, who have said to us, "Hey, we're following the rules." Like, for instance, you know, "We're waiting until the end of the meeting to make a public comment" where others are, you know, maybe saying that they have an agenda item and they don't. So, I'm just, it's not, it's not only about following rules, but it's also like you don't want for the people who are being respectful to get less time, and the people who are being, who are not following rules and being disrespectful, really being rewarded for it. So, I agree. It is absolutely the chair who, you know, is responsible for that piece of it, but I thought that, I thought that that was really good conversation just around like, you know, if it's muting the mic, or if it's adjourning temporarily. I just wanted to have a little bit of discussion around that opportunity.
If somebody goes down the road of an item that's not on the agenda, you can just say that item's not on the agenda. You have to wait till the end. But if we change it to be a public comment in the beginning of the meeting on the agenda and any topic, and public comment on the agenda and any topic, you know?
Well, we can, yeah, I guess we can discuss that too.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, the opportunity to be heard is, doesn't have to occur at the same meeting So, um, you know, the opportunity to be heard is, doesn't have to occur at the same meeting when the vote happens? Generally, we're gonna allow that. Um, but the board is in even a stronger position if it's something that's been worked up and public comment was taken. Or we, it's a policy, we had a first reading and, uh, and a public hearing, and then we had a second reading, you know. If, if it's something that has been coming up in the past at prior meetings, and we had the opportunity for public comment there, the board is certainly in a good position to say, we're gonna move on from this and, and go ahead and take the vote.
May I just ask a question about viewpoint neutral? Um, because this comes up sometimes, like if a, if a person comes and they give a public comment, and the board does a really good job of not responding in that moment, but if it circled back during their closing comment to address that, does that, I mean.
Do you mean when it comes to our closing comments?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll address, sometimes if public comes up and they claim something or whatnot, some of us during our closing comments will address some of the public comments that have been made to correct the record and not let it.
Right. So, I think Mark Twain had the quote about, uh, falsehood can be down the street before the truth has even gotten shoes on.
Exactly, exactly.
Um, and, and we wanna be cautious about that. Uh, certainly, I think if, if any board member is concerned that something is just really off track, there's been a huge misunderstanding or misrepresentation, I think it's okay to ask, uh, you know, Madam Superintendent, could you clarify what the situation is on that? I think it's also kind of a better practice if, if a community member comes up with a specific issue, like, I'm having a problem with this particular bus route, and I don't feel like transportation's being responsive, and I just can't get anywhere with this. You know, I think it looks better for the superintendent to say, could you please give your name to this person before you go? And we'll have somebody get in touch with you.
So we, yeah, and we can add that language, but we follow up with everyone who comes to do public comment who says that they want to have a follow-up. We follow up. We already collect their information, and we follow up with every single person.
Cuz they do sign up ahead of time, so that we do get that acknowledgement.
So if someone, sorry, if they come up and make some crazy accusation, can we immediately direct it to her right there and then?
Uh, uh, yeah, I think so. And, and, and the, the response might be, um, we've got your information, thank you for, and I will make sure that somebody from my staff will be in touch with you tomorrow to address this issue.
Not necessarily addressing it from the dais.
Right, right. I, I think that's, um, unless it's, you know, all the money is going to this school, and no funds are being, you know, to this, or something just really wild, I think it would be appropriate for the superintendent to say, you know, that's, that's not the case. Uh, but I'm hearing your concerns, and we can have staff follow up with you. That's our procedure. Everybody who does public comment, we get back in touch with them, so. Uh, I think that just the public will be like, oh, okay, this is a well-run organization. Okay, um, and so the, the, the phrase I've got in there, that's a quote from, uh, a twenty thirteen case involving the city of Deltona. We wanna continue to encourage public comment. I'm just saying that there are some limits out there on it. So, you've gotta be comfortable with your process and everything. Ahead of time, I'm glad we're having this conversation. This is, I don't know if any of you have ever watched Prime Minister's Questions and with the British Parliament. It's wild, uh, because parliament members just get up and grill whoever the prime minister.
The way it should be.
And it is just, it is flying back and forth and, um, you know, not how we do things over here, and certainly not how we do things in a board meeting. So, I always say, this is not Prime Minister's Questions.
If you've never watched it.
Now I'm going to.
Yeah, there's something wrong with me that I watch it, but you.
Super British, snarky, you know.
Cheeky, fresh, oh, all of it.
Um, so, and the prime minister's just like down in the well, just taking it from all sides. Um, but, so public comment is an opportunity for the public to bring us information, to bring the board information, rather than, and maybe the superintendent. But it is not the time to engage in a back and forth. So I think that back and forth can be one-sided in the sense that we have received your information, and this is, we're gonna address it. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Or I, I just need to clarify something that maybe I misheard, but what is actually happening is blah, blah, blah. Um, that kind of a thing. So I, I think that is good that that's how it's being handled. Uh, it never goes well, um, when a back and forth gets started, because a member of the public can always escalate and always get more strident. But that's not what's expected from all of you, right? So you're always gonna be dealing with somebody who's kind of escalating, um, if you get into a back and forth. I think we can always continue to emphasize that there's multiple channels to communicate with board members and the superintendent. It's not only during the public comment period, right? You can bring us information in other ways if you're really that concerned about it. There are people that, um, and, and I, I don't know your community, obviously, as well as you do, and I'm not casting any aspersions, but what I can tell you is that in other communities, there are people that really want their three minutes of fame.
Yeah.
Um, and they make a point to show up at these meetings, and they have their live stream, uh, YouTube channel going on at the same time. Hey, look at me chastising the board on all of these things. So if you run, were ever to run into scenarios like that, there's some strategies you can use to deal with it. Uh, as far as I can tell, public comment seems to be functioning fairly well, and, and maybe we don't need to belabor any of this. There are some things that other districts who have run into those problems, you know, there's not a constitutional right to be recorded on video while you're delivering your public comment. Some, some districts just turn the camera off.
Yeah, I've heard that too.
Or they keep the camera pointed at the board and not at the, at the public speaker, you know, all of those kinds of things. But it's, the, the big philosophy is this is the opportunity for members of the meeting to bring information to the board. It's not the only way they can do it, uh, and they don't have unfettered, uh, right to, to dominate the business meeting of the board.
Mr. Delaney, can I ask a quick question on that?
Yes, ma'am.
If, uh, if a public speaker is engaging in what I would consider to be hate speech, um, I hear you that we have to allow them to continue to speak to us, but is that a policy that we could look at that we instruct the technical team to shut off the cameras during that?
Well, um, hate speech is not defined in your policy. Um, and, but what your policy does talk about is personal charges or verbal attacks upon the character, motives, ethics, or morals of board members or district employees. And that's a pretty good, um, marker, um, to, to rely on. And I think it's just a good reminder for whoever's the chair, or maybe the superintendent, can be keeping in mind that particular language. Uh, and I think it is from Policy Two-O-Five that is, is, have we veered across the line into a personal attack on the character, ethics, or morals of someone? And if we have, you could say, um, you know, that's violating the decorum rules of the meeting, and we're, and your time is now up, and you can move on to the next thing.
So if someone is, if someone's making comments that is anti-LGBTQ or anti, like, of any group of people, that would fall under that policy?
I can't say that. Um, I would need more facts and more specifics. There are people that certainly could, could get up there and say, hey, from my thirty years of research, I think that, uh, as a child psychologist, I think that, um, some LGBTQ policies have gone too far. You know, that might be anti-whatever, but it's still meeting the decorum rules of, you know, it's not a personal attack or something like that. So, um, it's hard to make these judgment calls on the fly. The, there are some people who come with the agenda of wanting to, um, push the bounds so much that they get shut down, so that would maybe give them an opportunity to bring a civil rights action.
Yeah, we had that going on, what was that, two years ago? I mean, full board chambers, people in fatigues, I mean, the whole nine yards. So we haven't, any meeting after those meetings is a piece of cake, so, yeah.
You know, and you had some challenging issues to your neighbor to the north around that same time period, and, and I, I, I get that. What I would say is, the First Amendment provides a lot of protection. And someone, it's designed so people can address their grievances with the government. Uh, that's the core of what's happening when somebody gets up to provide public comment. My elected official isn't doing things the way I wanna see it done. So I tend to think there's a fair amount of latitude in that. Um, and it's better to get through the three minutes and then move on to the next speaker. And rather than litigating whether somebody's civil rights were violated because we cut them short.
Yeah.
The counterbalance to that, um, is that we're running a business meeting. There are some reasonable rules of decorum on how you do that. There's been some federal cases in Florida on this exact issue involving, um, school districts in the last twelve months. So, but we don't wanna be creating new federal case law if we don't have to. So, if there's only fifteen more seconds on the clock and we can get through their time.
Yeah.
That's, th- th- there's certainly a benefit to doing that and moving on. But if it's getting to the point where it's derailing the meeting, um, it's clearly beyond the, the bounds of decorum. There's profanity, um, yelling, um, there's these personal attacks like we have in our policy. You would be on, on, you would be justified in shutting that down.
So one of the things that has come up is that in the, um, board comment rules, um, the public comment rules, they cannot address the board by name. However, they could come up and, well, the concern is that they could address staff members.
They should not be able to.
By name. And, and I, I agree that they should not, right now, the, the language says that they need to direct all comments directly to the chair, and they should not address the board by name.
Correct.
But we do have and have had times where they have addressed staff members by name. And so I, I'm saying to you as the board to understand that there has been some questions and concerns about that from staff around, you know, why is it okay for staff and not necessarily okay for board?
Yeah, shouldn't be okay for anybody.
Yeah, I agree, and I think, cuz they have another way to communicate that, through an email, phone call. If they have grievance with a specific, uh, employee, doesn't need to be in, on, on the, at the meetings.
Right.
Uh, in, in public comment anyways, so, uh, I, I think we should probably include that.
That is a, that is a good aspirational goal to have.
Right.
And I'm imagining trying to defend that, you know, if somebody came up very calmly with notes prepared, no profanity, and said, I think that these three people on your staff are not doing a good job, and here's why. And they delivered that in the sort of tone of voice, that is gonna be a hard case to defend in federal court if you take the microphone away from them. Uh, because they are, again, telling that. Uh, they're, they're using their First Amendment right to address their problems with the board.
So it's only a matter of decorum? So legally, any member of the community come, come up and use staff's names, school board member names, any names, as long as they're not violating decorum, is kind of what I'm hearing you say.
What I'm saying is that the First Amendment, eh, there's a reason it came first. You know, it is number one in the Bill of Rights. There's a lot of constitutional protections around that, particularly, they're not standing out on a street corner with a sign. They're right there in the meeting trying to tell their elected official where I think that you're wrong. What I just wanna caution you is that I think it might be difficult to make a, you're not allowed to say anybody's names, no matter what the circumstances. I think it would be hard to make that rule stand up in court if it were ever challenged. We can ask that of people. We can say, we've got hard-working public servants here. Let's treat everybody with respect. Can we, can you direct your comments back to me as the chair? If you've got specific concerns, we'll have somebody from the superintendent's staff follow up with you, but can, can we keep your comments here?
Okay.
If they refuse to do it, and really wanted to push the issue, is that something that you wanna take the microphone away from them? I'm only saying that there would be some risks associated with that.
So not necessarily to, to mute them or end their, their comment, but more as an op, it's an opportunity for the chair to intervene and say, that is a violation of our rules of conduct during public. Please refrain from doing that and direct your comments to me. Whether they comply or not is, is on their own, but you can only do so much.
I think it goes in that hierarchy of, hierarchy of those rules, those policies, their state statute, you know.
Right, and there's laws, and you could get out of those.
But, you know, I, I have seen board members say, uh, you, they said somebody's name, you know, take the microphone away from them. Like, eh, that, they said somebody's name versus their First Amendment right.
It is, it is a way for, for the chair to, to intervene.
Yes.
Even though the, and, and that, that would not, even though they're losing time because I have to intervene, that, they're still getting, that's part of their three minutes.
I agree.
By, by violating, they're actually hurting themselves, getting their message out. That's their consequence, I would say.
I agree with that. And, you know, is it, overall, is it, is it interfering with the expeditious or orderly process of our meeting? Um, that's from state statute. Some of that's gonna be kind of tied to decorum, like how, how are they delivering their concerns? And, so anyway, okay, I think that covers, we all kind of know how you could escalate if it ever needed to, or you can get assistance from law enforcement.
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
Just for the sake of, um, we have only seven minutes left. I know this is going into another portion of the agenda. You know, do we continue to work through these seven minutes? I think it may be necessary for us to come back together again at another time so that we don't rush through the content. I just.
Aren't we here till three?
No, you're here till two. We, you do have a break, and then, um, we come back at three.
Can we just have a working lunch?
I wanna put it out there to you. I think that this is a good break in place, and if you wanna continue to go through, you, you can, but, um.
I at least need thirty minutes to walk around and, yeah.
Well, what I, what I. What I'd suggest is if we, if, if, obviously, we're not, we're, we definitely don't have a lot of time to really actually go through this manual. I would like to at least let Mr. Delaney complete his presentation before we adjourn the meeting.
That's not gonna be possible.
How much longer do you, cuz it, we're almost there.
Then, we, we, we've got.
We could have a whole nother workshop.
But I think that the beauty of this new model may be a need for us to come back together and just continue to, to work it, yeah, and understanding what our workflow will be, what are the expectations, what's working, what's not, all of those things.
Will, we can just schedule another retreat.
Okay, if everybody's available.
We probably don't need to call this a retreat, but.
Yeah.
A workshop.
Uh, that, that's fine then. Um, is, if everybody's willing to come back again and do this again. I, I personally will say that I'm really benefiting from this information.
No, it's good information.
And I think it, it's gonna be very helpful for us to, to, you know.
I would agree.
Draft this operating manual for them.
And I think it's gonna be helpful for your relationship with working with Mr. Delaney, so that you guys are all on the same page with moving forward.
Right.
Okay. Then let's, let's go ahead and just.
We're done. So on the twentieth, we have a, you wanna do it on the twentieth when we have our workshop?
Next week, next month?
No, the twen.
Uh, this month?
This month.
That's, that's workshop and a night meeting. It'll be like a ten AM?
Yeah, like, well, it, honestly, I'd have to, I have a meeting from nine to ten at the university, so, like, eleven?
Okay.
But I don't think Delaney is, um, working through getting his schedule adjusted to hours, so I, I know that Tuesdays are kind of hard for you right now.
They, they have been more of a challenge, and I'm working that out, you know. Part of it is I, I'm also trying to understand, is the board generally trying to meet on the first and third Tuesday?
We always.
Okay, cuz I feel like there's, I've seen some second and fourths.
So.
Yeah.
First and third.
Uh, that, that was just because of the holidays too.
But we, they always know in advance of it, so they do, um, the first and the third unless something has come up. So we know like, like July four, this year.
We already have our calendar set, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, okay, so, yeah, that's the only time we, we deviate from that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, for, as far as February twentieth, I could be here as early as y'all would like to start, so.
Um, how much longer do, do you think, uh, this presentation you would need to complete it?
Um.
Ten thirty.
I could do my part real, real fast, but I'm being a little bit facetious there. This is intended to spark some discussion between y'all.
Well, I, I, it, it's a matter of what we wanna accomplish on the next meeting. If we wanna be able to, to, to receive the, the additional information and apply that to our procedure manual in the same meeting, we just need to allow for enough, cuz one o'clock is gonna be our.
I'm sorry, what time, how, how long did you say?
I, I, I think that this would be another one to two hours.
Yeah, I'm gonna say two hours at least.
Okay.
That'll take us to twelve thirty, and we have one o'clock.
So then, if, if that's the case, then it sounds like we would, we would still have to, that would be just, again, informational, and then we'd have to come back one more time to do this.
Ten thirty is not enough time.
Well, ten thirty.
Eleven thirty, twelve thirty.
Eleven thirty, twelve thirty, then we're right up, I, I'm saying to be able to go through our, our procedure manual. I mean, if we, if we have time, I think, let's knock it out, but I think we have to be prepared that we might have.
I think it's gonna take more time, we just.
I think we're, we're, we'll be coming together.
Let it roll. Let's just let it roll, and we'll get.
From ten thirty to eight o'clock at night?
No, 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 no.
No, no, meaning that by, in two hours. No, no, meaning that by, in two hours, so by.
Ten thirty, twelve thirty, then we have half hour to one o'clock.
So in this format.
But if we don't get it all done, we're going to come back again.
I don't want one of us getting a blood clot in sitting here.
No, what they're saying is, is if we have to meet in this format four times to get to where we are all on the same page, we'll do that versus trying to shove it all in.